Can someone help me get video? This thing is like logged out.
I don't have a video either. It's me right there. Oh. There we go. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Can I read it?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started? This is the September ninth, 2021 Little Rock Planning Commission meeting. So if you're here for anything more exciting, you're in the wrong place. So if we could go ahead and get started with a roll call.
Harold Baton, here. Derek Brooks, present. Scott Hamilton.
Present.
Todd Hart.
Here.
Marlon Haynes.
Here.
Robin Ramon.
Here.
Diana Thomas.
Present.
Michael Vickers.
Present.
Here.
So you have a quorum.
Okay, sounds like we've got a quorum. Let's see, with that, has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting, which would have been the August 12th meeting?
How much do we accept the minutes?
Okay, we've got a motion to accept the minutes from the August 12th and a second. If we could, roll call vote for the minutes acceptance.
Harold Betton?
Yes.
Derek Brooks?
Yes.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Marlon Haynes?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
Yes.
Diana Thomas?
Yes.
Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Bobby Vogel?
Yes.
Okay, we got all commissioners. Okay, thanks. So if we could just take a few moments to reflect upon and a few moments of silence for Little Rock City Commissioner Irma Hendricks, who passed away last night. Wonderful lady. I knew her very well and definitely had the heart and passion, I believe, for this city and certainly reflective in her work. So if we could just take a few moments of silence to reflect upon City Director Irma Hendricks. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, staff, shall we move on into the consent agenda?
Sir, good afternoon, Little Rock Planning Commission visitors and guests. This is the reading of today's consent agenda. We'll start with the consent deferrals. Item number thirteen, Z nine six zero five, rezoning from R two to C three at the northwestern corner of Canis Road and Denny Road. The applicant submitted a letter to the staff section with third request this application be deferred to the October fourteenth, twenty twenty one agenda. Staff supports their deferral request. Item number fourteen is land used twenty twenty one dash nineteen dash zero four. It's a land use amendment from O to C at the southwest corner of Chanel Parkway and Chanel Valley Drive. The applicant requested this application be deferred to the October fourteenth, twenty twenty one agenda in order to meet with the three nearby neighborhood associations on rezoning requests. Staff supports the deferral request. Item fourteen point one, Z nine six zero six, rezoning from MF twenty four and O two to C three, southeast corner of Chanel Parkway and Chanel Valley Drive. The applicant requested this application be deferred to the October fourteenth, twenty twenty one agenda in order to meet with the three neighborhood associations on the rezoning request. Staff supports the deferral request. Items on consent approval, Z seven zero nine one, this is Presbyterian Village, long form PRD revocation at eighteen Brookside Drive. Staff supports approval of the PRD revocation request. Item number three, S one nine zero three, Abbey Woods Preliminary Platt, west side of Nick's Road, six hundred block. Staff recommends approval of the proposed plat and associated setback in advanced grading variances substituted compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E in the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number four, Z dash four one six seventy, Metro Towing Revised PDC at nine seven one five Chronicle Glen Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested revised PDC, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the agenda staff report. Item five, Z dash four five two four H, Lee Clinic, Revised POD at twelve nine zero four Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested revised POD zoning, substitute to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number six, LU two zero two one dash one nine dash zero three. It's a land use amendment from SO to C. It's east side of Chanel Parkway at Northfield Drive. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request to amend the land use designation as a subject site from suburban office to commercial. Six point one, Z dash seven zero nine six eight, rezoning from O two to C three, east side of Chanel Parkway at Northfield Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested C three zoning. Item seven, Z dash not seven nine four eight E, Yates Revised POD, northwest corner of Highway ten and Morgan Cemetery Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested revised POD, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in sections D, E, and F and the staff analysis in the agenda staff report. Item eight, Z dash eight two three five C, Village at Hidden Creek PID, twelve one ten Stagecoach Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested conceptual PID zoning and associated advanced grading variance, substituted compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. A portion of the property located in the floodway shall be zoned OS. Permitted uses for the PID development will be permitted C three uses for lots one through four and seven through ten and permitted I one uses for lots five and six. Item nine on consent approval is Z eight seven two eight dash A, rezoning from R four C three, PCD to UU at nine hundred through nine hundred and twenty four East Ninth Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested UU zoning. Item ten, Z nine six zero two Ford Properties PRD. This is the northwest corner of West Six and Oak Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PRD zoning, substituted compliance with the comments and conditions in paragraphs D, E, D, and D and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item eleven, LU twenty twenty one dash zero eight dash zero one, land use amendment from RL to NC, northwest corner of West Twenty Sixth Street and Arch Street. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request to amend the land use designation of the subject site from residential low to neighborhood commercial. Item eleven point one, Z nine six zero three, rezoning from R four to C one. This is at the northwest corner of West Twenty Sixth Street and Arch Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested C one rezoning. Item twelve, Z dash nine six zero four, rezoning from O three C three and I two to C three, seventy five hundred South University. Staff recommends approval of the requested C three zoning. Item fifteen, Z nine six zero seven, rezoning from MF eighteen to C two, northeast corner of Ranch Boulevard and Ranch Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested C two rezoning. Item sixteen, Z nine six zero nine, Hooligans Indoor Shooting Range, PDC, nineteen nine zero nine Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC zoning, subject to the compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda report. Item number fifteen, I apologize, I believe I'd say it was nineteen nine six zero nine, I believe it's nine six zero seven. Continuing the consent approval, item eighteen, nine six one one, this is Joyner Conditional Use Permit at ten sixteen Rock Street. Staff recommends the approval of the requested CUP, subject to the, to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item nineteen, LU one nine dash zero one, Central Land Use Plan Amendment, I six thirty to I thirty and also I four thirty to Union Pacific Road. This package of amendments is designed to make the future land use plan more reflective of current and likely midterm future uses for this area. Staff recommends approval of the acknowledgement of the amendment package as presented. As of this morning, there's been an update on another item, which is item S dash one nine zero two. The applicant submitted an email to say they had the confirmation they do not have an issue with the agenda items, so we've moved to the consent agenda. I will read the description, S dash one nine zero two. It's Whitehaven Subdivision Preliminary Platt. This is at the west side of Lamore's Drive, approximately one third of a mile south of Taylor Loop. Staff recommends approval of the proposed plat and associated advanced grading variance, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis report and the staff analysis of the staff agenda report. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. I had just a few items there. Let's see, with that reading of the Stafford consent agenda, can we get a motion to accept? Absolutely, yes.
Second.
I hate to ask questions about the consent agenda. I'm just, and this is probably my own ignorance. Item nineteen, I guess I'm not used to seeing an item like this on the consent agenda. That's a package of other amendments. Is this the way that we would normally approve this sort of agenda item?
Mr. Ramon, we have presented these types of items to the planning commission before. We haven't done in a while, and I believe since you've been on the commission, we have not done so. What this is, is we typically, in the past years, went through the city and looked at all the land use plan for potential amendments on stuff that may not have been caught through applications or, you know, use changed. And then it is read through as a package for review, and that's when the plans committee has reviewed this, you know, for presentation, for presentation to the entire commission. And then, once approved, it will be forwarded to the Board of Directors for ordinance adoption. And so we do present it in a package if we're looking at certain areas rather than every individual item to be voted on. And then the board also hears them together as a package.
I guess my real question is not so much whether it's as a package. It's more would we normally see it on the consent agenda for the first time versus just like the regular agenda?
Yes, unless there is opposition to them that comes in, we treat it exactly like any other land use amendment, be it singular or in a package.
Okay. Okay, any other questions commissioners?
So everybody who this was ordering got noticed?
Yes, we noticed everybody and if they, and if there is opposition, if they do not want it, we do not bring it before the commission.
Mr. Chairman, with that explanation, I move that we accept the... Do we need two different motions for the consent deferral and the consent approval?
Now, since both of them was read, one was for the deferral and the approval, just voting on the consent agenda takes care of both actions.
I move that we accept the consent agenda together with all staff comments and conditions.
Okay, you got a motion. How about a second?
Second.
A motion and second, if we can get a roll call vote on accepting the consent agenda as presented.
Harold Betton?
Yes.
Derek Brooks?
Yes.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Marlon Haynes?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
Yes.
Diana Thomas?
Yes.
Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Bobby Vogel?
Yes.
You have, it has passed.
Okay, thank you. If the item that you're here this evening to listen in on was part of the consent agenda, you're certainly welcome to stay around and have fun with us, or you're free to go. Okay. All right, let's move into our regular agenda. Looks like the first item we have is going to be, is that, is it going to be S nineteen oh one or is it nineteen hundred? I think nineteen hundred got moved, right?
First item on regular agenda is item number A.
Yeah. Sorry. Okay, yeah, item A is nineteen, that's our first item. Okay.
Ready for me to read items?
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah.
Item number A is file number S one nine zero zero. This is Pleasant Run Subdivision Preliminary Platt at the northeast corner of Walnut Grove Road and Burlingame Road. The applicant proposes to subdivide ten point nine two acres into four lots for single family residential development. The property is owned R two and is located at the northwest corner, excuse me, northeast corner of Walnut Grove, Road and Burlingame Road. The property is currently undeveloped and partially tree covered. The property is located outside the city of Little Rock limits, but within the city's extra territorial zoning and subdivision jurisdiction. The proposed lots will range in size from two point zero seven acres to three point four eight acres. The lots will be final platted in one phase. A detention pond area of zero point four three acres for the subdivision is located between lots three and four and access easement from Walnut Grove Road to the detention pond area is provided on the plat. Section three one dash two one zero E one of the city's subdivision ordinance requires that residential lots take no direct access from arterial streets. Walnut, Walnut Grove Road and Burlingame Road are both classified as arterial streets. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a variance from this requirement. Lots one and three would take access from Walnut Grove Road and lots two and four would take access from Burlingame Road. The driveways will be located at least three hundred feet from the intersecting rights of way. A no access easement would be provided along the west and south boundaries of the overall property within three hundred feet of the intersecting right away, rights of way. The applicant is also requesting a variance from section thirty one dash two three two B, which requires that a residential lot be no more than three times deep as it is wide. Lot four has a lot width of one hundred and forty nine point nine one feet along Burlingame Road frontage and an average width of two hundred and one point two five feet with a lot depth of six hundred and seventy nine point three one, the longest west boundary. Staff supports the variance request as it is relatively minor in nature. Since the property is located outside the city limits, a construction permit for the installation of septic systems on all lots must be obtained from the Arkansas Department of Health prior to completion of the final plat for this subdivision. Staff acknowledged there has been, there have been no outstanding issues related to this preliminary plat request. The applicant has done a good job in addressing issues as raised by staff during the staff's review of this plat. Subdividing of this property should have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties. Staff recommends approval of the proposed plat associated variances. Excuse me, staff recommends approval of the proposed plat and associated variances, subject to the compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the staff agenda report.
Okay, let's see, the applicant for item A, present? Okay, again, asking is the applicant for item A, which is S nineteen hundred, present to discuss your request? We need to check outside, okay. Okay, I'm seeing Director Collins suggest that the applicant is not present. With the applicant not being present, I think we do have two, two people that have signed up to speak against this particular item, but should this be deferred?
This should be deferred chair for the bylaws if the applicant is not here. The rest of it is not heard. It is deferred until the next meeting.
Okay. All right, we'll take, no action on that, but I don't think we need any action on that from the commissioners.
We do, we do need a action on that. So please, if we would, entertain a motion.
Okay.
Second and a vote.
Yep, asking for a motion to defer item A S nineteen hundred to the next meeting due to the fact that the applicant is not present.
Still moved.
Okay, we have a motion. How about a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and second, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Harold Betton?
Yes.
Derek Brooks?
Yes.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Marlon Haynes?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
Yes.
Diana Thomas?
Yes.
Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Robbie Vogel?
Yes.
Is it unanimous?
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
We have a message on the chat from the applicant S nineteen hundred. He said he is muted by the host, so he is online.
Okay. Can we figure out, can we figure out how to get the applicant unmuted? And then we'll probably do need taking action to reverse that defer.
Yes, you'll have to, if we can't get him unmuted, you'll have to expunge the vote.
Okay, let's see if we can get him unmuted.
Alan? Which is the, what was his login? Alan New.
New, okay.
Mr. New was not the applicant. Mr. New was against the, if that is the entity online, that is Mr. New. Yes, we got him listed as against the item and he has sent us stuff in opposition. That's not the applicant, I do not believe.
Do we have anything else that we can confirm the applicant's name present with this?
Other than the developer, Jeff Quo, the owner authorized agent, Jeff Quo, Richardson Engineering is the agent.
Okay, so it does not appear that that, did the person in the chat indicate that they were indeed the applicant or did? They are not the applicant.
Then we, if the vote stands.
Okay, all right, looks like one good seat. Okay, next item that we have is item one point one, which is S dash nineteen oh one, Wolf Bridge at Leewood Preliminary Platt. Staff, if you could share with us the...
Yes, item one point one, file number S one nine zero one, Wolf Bridge at Leewood Preliminary Platt, this is at eighteen Brookside Drive. The applicant proposes to subdivide eleven point six seven acres of property into fifty eight lots and four tracts for single family residential development. The property is currently zone PRD, expired and located at the north end of Brookside Drive. The applicant proposes to develop the single family subdivision as per the zero lot line criteria and the city subdivision ordinance. A zero lot line development is a residential development concept eliminating the normal side yard requirement on one side of a lot and providing a more usable space on the other side, on the other side yard. The minimum lot width for zero lot line lots is thirty five feet with a minimum depth of one hundred feet. The minimum lot area for zero lot line is four thousand square feet. All of the proposed lots conform with those standards. The applicant is proposing the following minimum building setbacks for the proposed lots. Front, twenty five feet, thirty five feet, four lots, seven through nine, and eighteen through twenty on block one. A rear setback of twenty five feet and side yard setbacks of ten feet on one side, zero on one side. A rear setback of 25 feet and side yard setbacks of 10 feet on one side, zero on one side. The proposed plat shows a possible building footprint for each lot. The applicant proposes to final-plat the subdivision in three phases. The proposed subdivision will include 1,940 linear feet of new streets. A secondary emergency access is located at the northeast corner of the subdivision between the end of the new proposed Brookside Drive section and the existing Brookside Drive further north. The applicant proposes to locate a mail kiosk within track C with a vehicular and pedestrian access to the kiosk. The mailbox kiosk location must be constructed in performance with USPS and the city of Little Rock design standards and be ADA accessible. The applicant is requesting a variance from the land alteration regulations to advanced grade future phases with construction of phase one and to grade the lots in each phase with the grading for streets and drainage improvements. Staff supports the advanced grading plan. The staff acknowledged there have or no outstanding issues related to this preliminary plat request. The applicant has done a good job in addressing issues raised by staff during the staff's review of this plat. Applicant is requesting no variances from subdivision ordinance requirements. Staff recommends approval of the proposed plat and associated advanced grading variance subject to the compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the staff agenda report.
Okay, thank you. This particular item does fall under the Richardson case, which means as a body, we must approve it, but we're also required to do a hearing. So I do want to give that notice as we present this particular item. And if there's anyone that has any concerns with it, again, the commission is required to approve it based on the Richardson case. I don't have the details of Richardson case, but if anyone needs that detail, I think our staff attorney is available that could give more details. But again, this particular body must approve it, but we do have an obligation to hear. So with that, is the applicant present? Okay, great, if you could approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts on this proposal.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, I am Brian Dale with Joe Whiten Associates. This is the developer Blake Wiggins with Wiggins Trust. Staff has done a good job of introducing the project. Been a pleasure to work with them and make sure that we've met all the ordinances and everything. The variance for the land alteration is simply to advance grade the site and prevent hauling material over public streets. We're going to cut and fill on-site and get the site to balance on-site. So with that, we'd like to reserve any time for any comments or rebuttal.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, is, I'm looking at our cards, and it's like the first name I've got is MJ Lohman. MJ Lohman. If you could approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts.
I am MJ Lohman, and I live at 31 Reservoir Heights Drive. My home is directly west of and adjacent to the proposed Wolf Bridge development. For those in my neighborhood, the primary concern is the preservation of the wooded area between our community and the proposed development. The preliminary plat indicates over 80 feet of undeveloped land between the development property line and the back line of each lot. Thank you. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to speak with the developer Blake Wiggins regarding our concerns, and he indicated that he had no intention of removing trees or excavating into the existing 80 feet of wooded area. He expected to preserve the area as a natural screen and privacy barrier between us. At this meeting today, the Reservoir Heights neighborhood would like to ask the developer to confirm the inclusion of this buffer in the development and for the planning commission to include an undisturbed buffer of at least 80 feet as a condition of approving the replat. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next name I have speak is Lee Beverley. Lee Beverley. Again, if you could approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Lee Beverley. I live in Leewood. I've been, I've been on this project for quite a while. I want to first off extend my sincere thanks to the Wiggins family for redeveloping this plat as R-2. We've, we much appreciate that, and many of the adjacent residents appreciate it as well. That being said, we still have some concerns. I'm not here to oppose the project, but I do, we have some concerns about, specifically about the grading plan. As you know, the grading plan is not required to be submitted at this point in development, but this is a pretty extreme site. There's, I think there's a 90-foot vertical difference between the far east and far west and far east. The developed portion is, there's about 70 to 75 feet of vertical elevation between the edge of one lot and the edge of the other. The, it's going to mean there's going to be a lot of fill deposited on the east side of the site. In addition, there's a flood plain, of course, along the east side. At least 12 of these lots are going to require extensive fill to get them above the flood plain. But more, more concern is the approximately 10 to 30 feet of fill, which is going to be needed to deposit it along the east side somewhere. As you know, this property immediately abuts the city-owned green space to the immediate east. The, we're very concerned that there's a possibility of encroachment on that green space. When you, when we think of the mechanics of what we're, they're going to do with the dirt, there's a, in our mind, there's a possibility that that dirt could encroach on the green space. We're very much opposed to that. There's a possibility that retaining walls would have to be built to hold that in order to block that material from getting on the city-owned land. But there's several large utilities through there, which I think would preclude the building of significant retaining walls. In addition, one of the houses sits directly atop a 21-inch sewer line. I'm not sure, I have a feeling that won't be built that way, but we're concerned that instead of possibly moving the house, that the city would somehow elect to relocate that sewer line. If they did, it would be in the city-owned green space. It could possibly be relocated. All of it wishes to say, we know that the grading plan is not required to be submitted and approved at this time. We know that once this plat is approved, that there's going to be a lot of pressure on the city to make it work. And we're very concerned that without a grading plan, there's a very good possibility in our minds that the city-owned green space will in fact be subjected to additional fill, additional utilities, which would wreck the trees and the vegetation on that space. And it would also possibly hurt the future prospects of a recreational trail through that space, which I think has also been proposed. What we're asking is that you please stipulate with this approval that the development will not encroach on the green space, or alternately that the approval be deferred until submission of a grading plan, at which point we can actually verify that the far eastern boundary of the property won't encroach. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't believe we have anyone online that's speaking. So would the applicant like to return back to the podium?
Believe since we are a residential zone property and we've got residential to the east and the west, I don't believe any buffers are required. I know that we show a large buffer on the west. We won't build any structures in there, but part of that will be used to grade down to the level of the site. I don't believe that we could state that 80 feet of that will be undisturbed. It'll, some of it will be undisturbed, but without doing a detailed grading plan, we don't know that 80 feet of it could. We could commit to a buffer, but not an undisturbed buffer. As to the buffer to the east, that is owned by the city of Little Rock. We have no intentions of grading in it. We can't grade in it without permission. We're not, have not seeked permission to grade in it. There are some large utilities over there that we're going to have to work around. We're going to comply with all rules and regulations of the city of Little Rock and with FEMA. After we have filled those lots, we will have to do a lomer with FEMA to remove them from the flood plain. We will comply with all FEMA regulations. We will also be doing stormwater detention as required by the city of Little Rock. We are committing to meet all the city ordinances that will adhere to this project. I think that's all we have unless the commission has any questions for us.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move towards a vote. Again, as a reminder, this is a Richardson case, so our action must be in the affirmative, but we do need to take action on it.
Okay.
Hey, Scott, can I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely, yes, please.
This particular tract in the background right up, it looks like the planning commission approved it over from PRD to R-5 back in December, and the board of directors overturned that. And then it looks like they came back in May, and we approved a rezoning from PRD, we being the planning commission, approved a rezoning from PRD to MF24. Board of directors denied that zoning request. And I understand how Richardson plays into this, but on a PRD, so you have to comply with the preliminary plat, you have to comply with all of the requirements, right? So on a PRD, how do you, how do you do that since there's not, there's not a specific requirement for the density on a PRD?
Well, a plan development in itself is its own specific zoned area. It is, it is used when you have variances or other criteria. It can be if a design overlay district is in there and it doesn't meet certain specific criteria of a design overlay district. A good example is if it is in the Highway 10, DOD, two acres or less. If, if they're not, if they're trying to plat it two acres or less, then it's in with the DOD. You have to, it says it has to go as a plan development. So, but when you submit in a plan development in itself, when it gets approved at the board level, is it's zoning. It is no longer the underlying zoning. So if a subdivision comes through as a plan development, whether it's even a multifamily, commercial, or any type of subdivision, it still may be a subdivision and subject to a plat, but it is zoned plan development.
Okay.
So technically, you say that there's variances, but it does not have variances in the plan development. It is what the plan development is approved.
That, when the plan development was approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the PRD was approved, a certain density was approved with that.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so, so what we're saying here is when the applicant comes back, then they've met all of the, all of the qualifications of the PRD that was filed and has de facto become the zoning on this property. So once they meet those requirements, then it's Richardson.
Well, what's, I think some of the confusion is, is the original plan development that was approved, that actually went through and did get approved, all the others that were denied, that is not on, you know, consideration. It's the one that was approved at the board.
Yeah.
And that development did not happen.
Right.
And so the developer for cause can request a revocation of that plan development because it was not done in the timeframe specified by our codes. And that was an item that was on consent that the commission approved, and that also will be an item for the board for the revocation. So the board will hear the revocation, and it will also, and then it won't hear the plat. The plat, once it's approved at the planning commission, is done. But the revocation has to be heard because that is what the codes state for any plan development that was approved at the board. It will go back in front of the board only.
Believe it or not, I think I, I think I understand that, so thank you.
All right, any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, accept the motion for this particular item.
Mr. Commissioner, I move that we accept file number S-1901 together with all staff comments and conditions, including the recommendation of approval.
All right, got a motion and a second. Can we go for a roll call vote?
Earl Benton?
Yes.
Derek Brooks?
Yes.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Marvin Haynes?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
Yes.
Diana Thomas?
Yes.
Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Robbie Vogel?
Recused.
Eight to one, it passes.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item we have is item number 17, which is Z-9610. Staff, if you could share with us this particular item.
Yes, sir. Item number 17, this is file number 9610. Come and go PDC, location, located at the southeast corner of Cantrell Road and Chenan So Boulevard. The applicant proposes to rezone the 1.51 acre property located at the southwest corner of Cantrell Road and Chenan So Boulevard from C-3 general commercial district to PDC planned district commercial. The rezoning is requested to allow for the development of a convenience store with gas pumps. The property is located within the Highway 10 design overlay district. The property is undeveloped and mostly grass-covered. Some site work has taken place in the past in anticipation of future development. The property is part of, two, property is part of a two-lot development with this lot being 2.11 acres in area and the lot to the south being 1.08 acres. As part of the development plan, the applicant proposes to move the dividing lot line to the north, thereby creating a new lot of 1.51 acres, which is being proposed for the development. The dividing lot line is being moved based on the fact that it runs through the existing building to the south. Since moving the dividing line creates a lot less than two acres in size within the Highway 10 and DOD, a planned zoning development is required for the development of the corner lot, just the north lot. The applicant proposes to construct 3,968 square foot convenience store building within the west half of the property. A gas pump canopy covering six double-sided, gas pumps will be constructed on the east side of the convenience store building. The proposed building will have an overall height of approximately 18 feet. The current C-3 zoning allows a maximum building height of 35 feet. The building will be constructed of fiber cement panels with cast stone panel wainscoting. The proposed convenience store building will be located 100 feet back from the front with north property line, over 60 feet from the rear, south property line, and over 30 feet from the west side property line. Proposed canopy structure will also be located 100 feet back from the front property line, 40 feet from the rear property line, and over 60 feet from the east and west side property lines. The proposed site plan shows 26 parking spaces, paved parking spaces, which includes spaces at the gas pumps. The ordinance would typically require a minimum of 17 spaces for this proposed development. The proposed parking will be sufficient to serve the proposed development. There are currently two shared driveways, northeast and southwest corners of the lot, which will serve as access to the project. Cross-access will exist between this property and the property immediately south. The proposed site plan shows a dumpster location on the south side of the convenience store building. The dumpster area must be screened as per section 36-523D of the city zoning ordinance. The applicant notes that the proposed. The applicant notes that the proposed convenience store will be a 24-hour, seven days per week operation. The applicant also notes that site lighting will be low level and directed away from adjacent properties. The applicant is providing a 40-foot landscape area along the front property line as per the Highway 10 DOD requirements. Planting of trees and shrubs will be required within this area as per the DOD standards. No berms will be required within this area based on the current upward slope of the property. The buffers along the east and south property lines are sufficient. No variances are needed for these buffers based on the fact that they are cross access easements along the east and south property lines. Areas set aside within the proposed site plan for building interior and perimeter landscape and appears to comply with the minimum requirements of Chapter 15 of the Landscape Ordinance. The minimum perimeter landscape width requirements appear to be met with this plan. All building setbacks, landscape areas, and buffers will comply with the Highway 10 Design Overlay District standards as found in Section 36-346 of the code. All building and ground mounted signage must comply with the Highway 10 DOD standards of Section 36-346 subsections F2. The Department of Planning and Development Engineering Division had the following additional comment. With development, the developer will be required to construct a northbound left turn lane on Chenan So Boulevard onto Cantrell Road as required by the master street plan. The southbound lane, the southbound left turn lane on Chenan So Boulevard onto this property has been denied by Public Works. The southbound left turn movement would, would be permitted to occur with removal of small island south of the main median within Chenan So Boulevard. The applicant provided responses and additional information to all issues raised during staff's review of the application. To staff knowledge, there is no outstanding issues. The applicant is requesting a variance from Section 36-346A, which requires a minimum lot size of two acres in the Highway 10 DOD. As noted previously, the lot is currently 2.11 acres in size with the dividing south property line running through the existing building to the south. In order to correct this situation by moving the dividing lot line, the subject property is reduced from 2.11 acres to 1.51 acres. Staff supports the variance request. Staff is supportive of the requested PDC zoning to allow for the development of a convenience store with gas pumps. Staff views the request as reasonable. The property is currently zone C3, which allows a convenience store with gas pumps as a permitted use. The fact that the property owner is suggesting dividing property line between this property and the property to the south resulting in the subject property reducing to less than two acres in area is triggering the requirement for the property to be rezoned to PDC. Staff believe that the proposed development is appropriate, appropriate and meets the intent of the Highway 10 DOD. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC zoning and associated lot area variance subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, is the applicant present? If you will approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts on this proposal.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Klauffeld, I'm with Ozark Civil Engineering, representing our client Come and Go. As you're aware, we are before you to present a plat, site plan, and a rezone request for this property. We are here to see that we are meeting the minimum requirements as set forth by the city of Fayetteville, or city of Little Rock's planning and engineering divisions. We are aware that there are some other items that will need to be worked out with our client and the commercial development. There's some items with regards to architectural review setbacks, things of that nature, but we are here now to make sure that we meet the city's minimum requirements. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, we've got a few cards that want to speak against the proposal. So if you'd like, we'll ask them to come forward and then you can certainly come back and address those questions as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, the first card I have, I'm here, oh, Tim Daters. Okay, approach the podium and state your name and share with us your thoughts.
Chairman, my name is Tim Daters. I'm a consultant engineer with White Daters and Associates. I'm here on behalf of the developer of Cheneau Valley Potlatch Deltic. The technical issues that I've been asked to address by Potlatch is the center around the removal of the landscape median in Shannon Show. Shannon Show was originally constructed as a T intersection with Highway 10 by Potlatch Deltic in the late 1990s. They've been, they've been maintaining the landscape island since then. In the mid 2000s, we submitted a project on this site for a McDonald's. We did show on that particular plan an additional lane, but with that plan, the additional lane was constructed on the east side of Shannon Show and not taken out of the center island. When this project was originally put forth and approved by the planning commission, it was specifically noted that there would not be a southbound left turn into this project. There was a slight modification of the island made to allow a southbound left turn out of the project, but there were no modifications made to the island to allow the left turn in southbound. The current project is a platted lot. It's got a 50-foot building line from Shannon Show. So this will require a replat of that platted building line to allow a building to be placed closer to the Shannon Show than the 50 feet. Those are just basically the technical issues and we really want to see the median protected. And if there is an additional lane, we'd like to see it added on the east side of Shannon Show, not taken out of the median. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next card I've got is Bill Spivey.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, we intended to kind of two for that and we blew it, so. Ms. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Collins, and I don't think Mr. Overton made it. Maybe Ms. Latimer's here somewhere, I'm not sure. My name is Bill Spivey. Law firm of Wright, Lindsay &amp; Jennings, and I'm, it's my privilege to appear before you today on behalf of Potlatch Deltic Real Estate. The current developers of the Cheneau Valley addition to the city of Little Rock in opposition to the item currently before you. I will endeavor to be brief, but those of you who know me may know that that may be a challenge. Nevertheless, I wish to express our client's opposition to the present proposal. Two notes, first, for over 20 years, I've been the designated representative of Deltic Timber and subsequently Potlatch Deltic to receive notice of any matters pertaining to rezoning and development in Cheneau Valley. I never received a notice of this matter. Second, let me be clear, Potlatch Deltic does not oppose the proposed use of the subject property. However, for reasons I'm about to enumerate, this proposal is unworkable. Let me also be clear, further clear, that Potlatch Deltic understands implicitly that you have no obligation to consider any of the points I'm about to make. However, as we have on many prior occasions over the past 30 years, when an applicant has ignored, for whatever reason, both the covenants and restrictions that cover every single property in Cheneau Valley, be it residential or commercial, and has also made no attempt whatsoever, to my knowledge, to contact the developer or the Cheneau Valley Architectural Control Committee, which I'll refer to as the ACC, we have asked for this commission's indulgence to allow for a full consideration of the proposal by both Potlatch Deltic and the ACC. We believe that this proposal is at best premature and incomplete, and at worst, violative of many important covenants and restrictions, which burden this property and which are all of record and which we strongly suspect, well known to the applicant and its representatives, and it's also misleading. We're not here to question the applicant's good faith or whether it has complied with any obligation to the planning staff to make them aware of these burdens and restrictions, but we want to make certain that you're aware of them as you consider today's application. First, as the developer of Cheneau Valley, Potlatch Deltic has reserved and to itself the right to approve all subdivisions or pre-subdivisions of a property covered by the bill of assurance or declaration of covenants and restrictions of Cheneau Valley. I'm not an engineer, and those of you who know me realize that's why Tim's here, to make sure that I don't get off in the weeds on technical issues, but I think I've heard several things said today which lead me to believe that somehow or another this lot's going to have to be reconfigured. I don't even know if that's properly before you today. Second, Potlatch Deltic maintains the medians on Cheneau Parkway, Rowling Road, and Shenan So Boulevard under a franchise agreement with the city of Little Rock. All of the landscaping, maintenance, and plantings are paid for by Potlatch Deltic. The intersection of Shenan So Boulevard and Highway 10 is one of the major entrances to Cheneau Valley. And if you're familiar with the site, you know that includes mature trees, grass, and other amenities which are seen and enjoyed by everyone who accesses Cheneau Valley or vice versa, Highway 10 via this route. As we understand it, the proposal would destroy a portion of this median to allow for a turning movement to serve the proposed use of the property. Potlatch Deltic adamantly is opposed to the destruction of median. What the applicant is in essence asking you to do is to subsidize its development of this property by taking land from the city and the public, which should instead come from the applicant's property. Why is this? Because the proposed development is designed, as designed, doesn't fit on this property. Neither Potlatch Deltic nor the ACC have been afforded any opportunity to discuss any possible reconfiguration of the applicant's proposal. In at least one prior proposed development, which never got completed on this property, the planning commission approved a plan which would use part of the applicant's property to accomplish this terming movement without sacrificing the landscape median. I think we have to ask ourselves, why aren't we doing that here? Third, the plat of this property includes a 50-foot building setback along the east side of Shenan So Boulevard, but the plan you have shows the applicant's building being constructed over this setback and much closer to Shenan So than is permitted by the plat. Surely, these aren't innocent mistakes on the part of the applicant. Here again, neither Potlatch Deltic nor the ACC have been offered any opportunity to discuss the proposal with the applicant, and at least as presently contemplated, it is unacceptable. In the past, both the planning commission and the Little Rock Board of Directors have expressed a desire not to be placed in the position of reconsidering a plan they have previously approved because the same plan was not approved by Potlatch Deltic or the ACC, or was approved with enough material changes that resubmission to the commission and the board later became necessary. If for no other reason than a genuine desire not to waste the commission's time, we respectfully ask that further consideration of this application be deferred until such time as the applicant has applied to both Potlatch Deltic and the ACC for approval of a plan for development of this property. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know many of you have been on the commission, perhaps not a long time. Some of the older members have heard me make this plea before. It's not the first time I've been down here. We always work with the planning staff. I think Mr. Collins will confirm that. I know Mr. Overton will. We always work with the commission to try and come up with the best possible plan for the applicant and citizens of the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next name I have is Andy Byrd. Andy Byrd?
Mr. Chairman, there's 10 minutes left.
Okay, all right, thank you for that reminder. You have 10 minutes for remainder comments.
Could I defer my time to Sue Alford, please?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, the next name I have is...
Hello.
Okay, if you could state your name.
Uh, this is, I'm Carolyn Alford. I am the secretary of the Chauva Court, uh, POA. And I want to talk a little bit. No one in the POA was notified that there was to be a vote on a variance. In fact, we found out yesterday in the afternoon when one of our neighbors heard from a friend that, hey, something's going on. They're going to do a variance in the adjacent area. We fought this before, so we were kind of shocked. We tried to notify as many people as we could. We tried to get as much information as we could. But it's odd that no one in the POA was notified. Change in the zoning should necessitate notification of every homeowner within 200 foot, and I understand it should be by certified mail, or at least it used to be. Only one notification was sent to a homeowner in our neighborhood. It was sent in mid-August, the day before they left for vacation. The notification did not indicate that the plan was to put a 24-hour-a-day convenience store with six two-sided gas pumps or come and go on the property. We notified as many people as we could. Several of them are here today with me. And we want to know why, why only one house was notified, that there is going to be a change, that there is going to be this type of 24-hour convenience store located close to our properties. We discovered that the developers used the planned community development boundaries, the PCD, rather than parcel boundaries to determine who in the neighborhood needed to be notified. Therefore, only one resident received a notification. This seems to be a deliberate move to keep Chauva residents uninformed. We also have some questions, and they involve what the gentleman before us was talking about. We received some information that part of a building was to be used, and then something else, and then we saw something else that they're going to build a close to $4,000, $4,000, excuse me, square foot convenience store. And where it was located before now seems to have changed locations. So we're kind of confused. We want to know where the gas tanks are going to be. Are they going to be basically in our backyards? And I think you would be concerned about that as well. We had a brief meeting of the, uh, board members of the POA, and we would like you to definitely postpone a vote on the zoning proposal. So the, uh, the Chauva POA has time to notify all members and to prepare a proper response to this. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. All right. Let's see, I've got two additional cards. Now, these cards are both in support of the item. I've got Todd Butler. Okay. Okay. And I also have Michael Galtier. Gotcha, okay. All right, would the applicant like to return back to the podium and address the comments that were made?
First off, I just want to start off by saying that we, we are presenting a, a development project that is meeting the requirements set forth by the city of Little Rock. We do understand that there's other requirements that our client will need to continue to coordinate and work through, issues such as architectural things, building setbacks, but we're coming before you because as a lot was platted in 1996, that south property line does cross that existing building. In order for this site to be developed, we do have to make a lot line adjustment. As far as the Cheneau Show Boulevard improvements, what we presented right now is preliminary. This is working with engineering staff, and this was a recommended, recommendation by the city engineering department. As far as the fuel tanks, the fuel tanks will be located on the north side of the property between the north curb line and Highway 10. As far as notifications, we used Waco Title, and we did the notifications that were as required by the city's planning staff. If I had any other questions I may have missed, I apologize.
Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments on this particular item?
I have one question.
It's ridiculous.
Does the city ordinance require the approval of the entities that the attorney spoke about? He was, the attorney that testified said that the applicant did not seek the approval of, and he mentioned a couple of entities, and I want to know whether the ordinance requires that or not.
Staff.
Commissioner Benton, there is not an ordinance that requires an approval of any entity as far as a homeowner association or the architectural committee that Mr. Spivey spoke of. It is encouraged that the applicant meet with them to work through those on any neighborhood association, and also that would include the architectural committee of Chenal Valley. But there is not a ordinance that requires it specifically.
Can we just put a finer point on that? I mean, he referenced also the covenants that run with all the land in that area. So to what extent do we take into consideration the covenants that might apply otherwise?
The planning commission is not bound by any covenants or restrictions or listed any deeds. They can take it into consideration. That was brought to our attention prior to the meeting. We also brought that to the applicant's attention and requested a copy of those be submitted by them to us so that we could present that to you, and to, as of the meeting, we had not received that from them. But as far as compliance with, the planning commission can take it into consideration by any means, but it is not an obligation for this commission to make a decision.
Well, okay, but, so you, would the staff still recommend approval of this application were it to evaluate it earlier with the covenants that are in existence? I mean, if you just got to say, yeah, I understand, I'm just saying, this report obviously took weeks to evaluate and make a recommendation. If, as part of that process at the very beginning, would the same conclusion flow? If you were aware of the covenants, had evaluated them, how would that play into your process of approval or recommendation to know?
Well, as I said, when I say the commission is also the city, we do not have to take into consideration any covenants and restrictions. We, the staff reviews it as an applicant, that is, the applicant's submission and through the due process, and just as I stated, we did not have those at the time, so we made the recommendation to get it sent out, well, a week we can have prior to this meeting. And so that's what we have. And then I just made the statement that to the date, we have not received that.
I didn't mean to hijack your, sorry. You have more questions? Thought I got it. Nice. All right.
Chair, I have a couple, I guess, more statements than anything. It seems like we have a constant theme before us each time we get on the regular agenda that the citizens are not communicated well from the developers. And I understand 200 feet is a very minimal amount of linear feet they need to communicate with, but it seems to be a constant reoccurring theme that not everybody is aware of what's going on. So my ask would be that, you know, we as a commission take it upon ourselves to potentially, you know, evaluate, how do we get our citizens more information so they can participate in this process a little bit better? So we don't end up with like what we had with the Pleasant Run subdivision with approval, denial, approval, denial, approval, because we had to, you know? And then, you know, I guess my question that I have is I'm looking on PAGAS, and which property line are y'all using to delineate the 200 feet from? Because on PAGAS, it looks like it's all one property line, not two. So maybe I'm viewing it incorrectly. There's a lot of reverb, so, sorry about that.
Like Commissioner Vogel, if I may, I'd like to, you know, talk about the legal notifications first. Present the state law. The notification that this commission requires of all applicants is that a public notification be in a prominent circulate, circulate newspaper being circulated in an area 15 days prior to the public meeting. That is the legal notice. All other notices are just as a requirement of the bylaws of this commission. It is 200 feet, and I pulled a quick measurement from the property line to the Chauveau subdivision, and lot or address 85 was the only one that should have been notified. We do, however, send out notifications to all neighborhood associations that are registered with the city with their, with add emails, because we only send it out emails for a mass email, and that was a question that was raised Tuesday when we got back and by Director Hines of somebody in the area. And the contact that was listed in there, one, did not have an email address on there for us to put in the mass email, and second, I believe it was not changed to the current contact that was representing the POA or the homeowner association. So it is up to the POA to keep the contact information updated. We do send out, and we did prior to, Mr. Malonka probably explained the number of times over the past two years that we tried to reach out to all the neighborhood associations that we have listed with the city to get that contact information to send it out.
I'm definitely not criticizing the staff. That is not my intention at all. It just seems like we could implement a better process that helps communication, you know? And not every POA is going to be as diligent as some, but, you know, to put the ownership on them might not be the proper burden, you know? Maybe we as a city need to reach out and do certain, you know, activities that say, look, if you want to be communicated, here's the registration website that you go to, here's the point of contact that you need to enter, you need to enter in all this information, backup contact. I mean, these are all normal operating procedures, the companies that we deal with, and, you know, not to say that they don't change, they don't get irrelevant, they don't become antiquated. I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just saying that it's a theme that seems to come up, but citizens continue to be frustrated that they are not included in the process as much as they want to be. And I understand minimum law, but also I think our city should set a little bit higher standard and a bar that says, hey, we are proactively trying to address this concern so that we do get the input, so that it doesn't become a frustration point to our citizens. With that said, I will end.
Okay, thank, yeah, Mr. Hart.
Yeah, I am fairly comfortable with, with everything about this development except the median issue that was brought up a little earlier by Mr. Spivey. So, so I don't, I'm not clear in this case who controls that, who owns that. I'm not clear if the city has the right to give the developer or the owner of that lot leeway into that median. I know I'm looking at Google Earth right now, and obviously there's a, there's a way into the retail center now that's just to the, just to the south of this development. And I know that the cut-through perhaps was intended to be left-only, but it's, it's not. People, people make a right out of the southbound lane on Shenan Show, or they make a left out of the southbound lane on Shenan Show and turn into the development there. So I'm, and I think this is an important part of just good planning, is to be able to give, give folks who are traveling up and down Shenan Show access to any development there. So what is, what's, what's the, the median? Who, who controls that? Who owns that? Who has the right to put a, put a turn lane in and cut down trees and take out sprinkler systems and all of those things?
Well, the right-of-way for Shenan Show is controlled by the city of Little Rock. That is our right-of-way. Highway 10, where it ties into, and I would guess that maybe a little bit of that island may be out into the Highway 10 right-of-way, just depends, or, but that is controlled by the Department of Transportation. Now, as far as control of the right-of-way, I do understand Mr. Spivey's presentation on what could happen and what has potentially, or what has been proposed in the past of what happened to that island. And, you know, essentially, the configuration of a intersection is pursuant to the approval and recommendation of the city and city staff, and that's where traffic engineering comes in and looks at it. Now, whether a left-turn movement, that needs to be made, and a cut into that island is done, that's a recommendation of staff, whether it is needed or not for that development. If that is, they recommended for this development to have that, definitely when other developments happen further south on that roadway, that intersection would need to be approved. The configuration of such, you know, has been reviewed by staff and a recommendation made.
So the, what's proposed by the developer now, so I'm seeing if you're, if you're headed southbound on Shenan Show, the proposal is to take a piece out of that median and give cars an opportunity to make a left-hand turn into the southern portion of this lot. Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, that smaller, if you look at that plan, there's, it looks like a smaller island that also accommodates a plat that was previously approved by the commission that is just to the west, if I'm correct. So that island would also accommodate a turning movement from that subdivision on the west to also make a left-turn movement and go back to the north towards Highway 10. So it's not just this tract of land that that would affect, it's also a tract that is just to the west.
Okay. And, and so, one more question, Mr. Chairman. So the, the, the construction or the demolition of certain parts of that median, that's really between the applicant? And putting that back, I guess, is, that's, that's the, between the applicant and the Deltec, Potlatch Deltec, right? That's not a, not a concern of the city?
Well, if you're talking about putting back what is out there, the city would be involved in all that, because that's a construction and permit that's in there. Since in the degree Potlatch Deltec is maintaining it, they would be involved in that also if approved and goes through all the way to the board level. And as, you know, stated before, this is before you as a planned development, which is preliminary. And so it still has to go to the Board of Directors for action, whether it is after this commission or either in appeal.
This is an interesting twist to it, because I, I think if, as it sits today, I would vote to approve it if, but if the applicant and Potlatch Deltec, I guess if the turn off of Shenan Show was denied, if that wasn't there, if they couldn't get that, I would think differently about it. So I'm going to assume for today's purposes that we're approving this, we're approving this sketch with access off of Shenan, with southbound traffic having access to the development off of Shenan Show.
Also, if I could, Chair, make a point. The commission can vote to approve, can vote to deny, but they can also, if majority, can vote to defer if they, you know, have looked at application and feel there needs to be more time for the commission to make a decision on an item.
Just on that point, this goes back to the original point that I made, which is, with the benefit of the covenants, would staff come to a different conclusion? And I personally would favor a second look at this by the staff to then give us a recommendation with the covenants included in that consideration. And I understand we're not legally bound by what's in there, but I would certainly think it would be part of your consideration. And then the, I'm sorry, just since I'm talking, is the only reason that we're considering this because of the, of the change of the lot line from, that makes it a 1.51-acre lot versus the 2.11-acre lot?
That's correct, and they did, Mr. Spivey did bring up the question of a replat, and yes, the, if they're meeting city standards and in a lot-line adjustment or a replat and coming through, that still would have to potentially come before the commission as a replat, but not typically done until after approval is made of the rezoning or the plan that is done. So you're not having to come back through with two items. So you would hear it again if it was approved all the way through and the setbacks were adjusted and the agreement was made with whatever restrictions that was done on any private agreement or deed restrictions on there, it would come back before. The point is, is that, that Mr. Spivey made is that if there's any alteration from an approval, from a plan development approval, we can make minor adjustments to it, but when it becomes a major adjustment to a plan development, it would need to come back before the commission again to be reheared as an amendment.
So, so to that point, Jamie, if, let's say, Potlatch Deltec was able to stop access from Shenan Show, and this development would have to come back before, because that would be significant. If, if you took access away from Shenan Show and it only became accessible from Highway 10, that would be a significant thing that would need to come back before. I'm afraid we're, we're going to approve this and then for some reason that the median cut is, is not going to happen.
Well, as I stated before, I don't know of any private agreement or deed restriction for the access on Shenan Show Boulevard. As far as the city is concerned, that's what we have reviewed, and what the statement is, is that access can be provided. So I cannot speak for anything privately that has been on a deed restriction or some type of scenario, but as far as city codes and licenses, that is in our approval authority for that.
I hear you.
Chair, I have another question.
Absolutely, yes.
Going just through our simple agenda here, use PRD or you use POD, then we switch to PDC. What is the difference between a PDC and a PCD?
Okay. Well, they're all planned developments. And then one of them is a single-use or single-unit plan development, and the other is more for an overall plan development for multiple uses, multiple buildings, different, it could be more lots. So when it's a single one, and I'll have to look and make sure it's, I'm stating the same one, I might state it backwards, but that's when it is a planned PRD or a PDR. So that is the, the difference.
This is giving all PDCs greater opportunities to utilize the property as opposed to a specific use, which would be a PC.
Well, even in a planned development, you can have, you know, a single tract, you can have multiple uses that are allowed because it could be conceptual, the plan development. We brought those before the commission and then also the board. So you could have a plan development that just says, I want all C1 and C2 uses on this, but it's still a single use, it's a single entity, it's a single lot. It's not a multiple lot plan development.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question, Commissioner. Just, just to go back to what Vogel...
And just, just to go back to what Vogel alluded to about making sure we notify, or doing something to make sure that all residents have an opportunity. Is there something on our website, Director Collins, if you know of, that allows these presidents to register or to update online the neighborhood associations' contact information?
Yes, there is a website, and I'll have to pull it up to tell them exactly where it is, but there is a website for our neighborhood associations that they can, has all the forms that they need to fill out to send in. It also has all the neighborhood associations in an Excel spreadsheet, so when they, they can click and download it, then it has all that information on there to update. So there is a website to go to for that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion for action on this particular item.
Can I make one clarification?
Yes.
The plan that you see before you on the southbound of Chinook Show Boulevard, it does show a, a turn lane, and that was a recommendation from engineering. However, following this submittal, it came back to us that it was not warranted. So engineering did recommend the removal of that, and they can verify that, that that's the clear way. But that will be removed, and our, our client does have that understanding. So really, the only cut into the median will be at the intersection, and also to the south of the access road leading into our development.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the floor is open for a motion of action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept file number Z-9610, including all staff comments and conditions, including the recommendation of approval.
Okay, we have a motion for acceptance.
Second.
A motion, second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Earl Benton?
Yes.
Derek Brooks?
Yes.
Scott Hamilton?
Yes.
Todd Hart?
Yes.
Martin Hines?
Yes.
Robin Ramon?
No.
Diana Thomas?
No.
Michael Vickers?
Yes.
Bobby Vogel?
No.
Six to three, it passes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I believe that includes all of our formal action for this evening. Is there any citizen comment? Okay, hearing none, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.